Good evening, everybody. Going to go ahead and call to order the Bristol, Virginia City Council for today, November the 28th, 2023. Please join me in a moment of silence. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you all for coming out. We've got a good crowd on a cold evening, so glad to see everybody. Going to go ahead and jump into Mayor's Minutes and Council comments. First thing I'll say is we had our Christmas tree lighting on Sunday night. It was cold and rainy, but the tree looks real nice, and appreciate everybody that came out for it. We have the Christmas parade on Thursday, December the 7th, which is always guaranteed to be a good event. There should be a whole lot of community participation in the parade, and I hear tell that Santa Claus will be at the end of it, so if you want to come out and see him too. Any other council comments?
I'll just reiterate, it was great to have the Christmas tree lighting. Thanks to Believe in Bristol, thanks to the folks of the city that put that on. A lot of hard work went into that. It was just always great to have a celebration of Christmas downtown like that, even if it was cold, even if it was wet.
Yeah.
It was a little miserable, but there was still Christmas joy there, so thank you for that. We appreciate that.
Ever the optimist. All right.
I would like to remind people that today is Giving Tuesday, and I would like to encourage everyone to demonstrate your thanks by giving. We have a lot of really good nonprofits in this area. We have one right across the street from us, and I'm sure they would greatly appreciate it if even after the meeting ends tonight, you'd just go over there and drop a check in their mailbox. We have a lot of really good nonprofits in this area, and please do whatever you can to support them. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager's comments.
Mayor, you stole my comments, so I don't have anything to add.
We didn't coordinate. All right. Going to move to the adoption of the agenda. Looking for a motion in a second.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda with two changes, that we take item number two on the regular agenda and postpone, or vote to postpone indefinitely. And then also, secondly, we add a closed session for Personnel Matters after item F.
All right. So we have a motion to postpone item two indefinitely, reschedule to a later date, and to add a closed session after item F. So that's the motion. Looking for a second.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Holmes, second from the Vice Mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Into the regular agenda. Item one, consider the performance agreement for the Infinity Venture Group LLC project for Gate City Highway. Staff report, and I believe that comes from Mr. Chapman.
Good evening, council. So we have been approached by a developer along Gate City Highway for a $30,000 incentive. It would be recouped through Mills Tax for a new restaurant going in 357 Gate City Highway. The term we're looking at is a two-year term, and there are some stipulations that the developer would have to give us. It would be a, they'd need to provide a copy of the lease for the new restaurant on a, for a five-year term, and the capital investment of the whole project would be $2 million. Includes purchase and construction costs. The, right now, and they're bringing it up on the screen, I went ahead and highlighted the area that we're discussing. It's directly across from the Kroger Shopping Center. We've, we were approached, the IDA was approached and unanimously voted to take this to council in hopes that you guys would approve it as well. Do you have any questions?
All right, thank you. So you said it was for a five-year term on the lease and a $2 million capital investment for renovation?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any other questions? All right, thank you. All right. So we are looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this performance agreement as presented.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes, council discussion.
On the one hand, we don't want to give away the city's money. Everything that the city gets is at, out of the pockets of our residents and other taxpayers. However, in this case, well, in general, I like the idea to incentivize good behavior as well. We tend to get involved as a council with how do we disincentivize bad behavior? We've had a good number of those situations come up recently. We also want to incentivize good behavior. And this case, they're looking at a $2 million investment, and they're asking for a very small return, which is out of the taxes that they themselves pay. We're not given anything upfront out of the city. If they don't follow through, we're not out anything. If they do their $2 million in capital improvements and then never open, or they don't stay open long, we've got, we're getting more tax revenue from their real estate taxes, and we still don't have to pay them anything. So it looks like a win-win to me. We need to make sure that we have policies in place so that we don't give away unreasonable incentives. But this one seems to be just that, an incentive.
Yeah, I'll agree with you, Councilman Pollard. I've talked to the owner of this property several times about this investment, and I think that he has always brought in good businesses that's been stable and something we would love to have here in the city. And so I think, as you were talking about honoring good behavior, I think this would be a great investment for us because it's not going to take any money out of our pockets, per se, upfront, but it's based on the taxes coming in from that business. So I think that for $30,000, for a $2 million investment, would be a good investment for us.
Yeah, I think there's a few different ways to look at incentives that the city enters into with different developers of projects, and, you know, some incentives happened long ago before any of us were up here. I know there were some incentives that were done with different businesses like McAllisters, Home Depot, Olive Garden, couple hotels downtown. So, I mean, to me, there have been times when this has worked out great because all those businesses are open and providing jobs and providing tax revenue, so. And I, like you, Ms. Nave, about this developer, he's done some good things in Bristol, so I'm excited for them to get finished up and make an announcement soon.
I'll jump in as well, since everybody else is. This is a great way to approach this. There's no skin in the game from us. It's a way to incentivize the business to grow, to build, and I'm excited to have this opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Chapman and the IDA for putting this together. We, I think this is a good plan to go forward and help the business without hurting the city.
Yeah, I do think it is important to differentiate that this is a no-net-loss agreement for the city, and, you know, we're not handing anybody a check for $30,000. It's based purely on the performance of the business once it's open. So we, obviously, we appreciate the capital investment that this developer wants to do and the business that these folks want to run there. I do think, as Mr. Pollard said, that we do need to have a bigger discussion about how we do no-net-loss agreements, how we do incentives going forward, and kind of have more of a framework in place, so there's less question, you know, and it's less of a, you know, a call, you know, a judgment call essentially, you know. We follow a policy, and if it meets certain requirements, then we do it; if it doesn't, then we don't. So I think that's a bigger discussion for another evening. But in this case, though, I think this is going to be a win-win for us. So I look forward to this business being open and being announced. Hearing no further discussion, the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. So we postponed item two. So item three, supplemental appropriation of $342,311, and staff report is from Mr. Phillips. Staff report is from you. Go ahead.
Mayor and members of council, this agenda item is a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $342,311 to fund the December 1st, 2023 salary adjustments that have previously been approved by council. This appropriation includes general fund appropriations of $326,205 comprised of interest revenues and state revenues for the salary and benefit expenditures, solid waste disposal fund appropriations of $12,386, and transit fund appropriations of $3,720. And staff recommends that council approve the supplemental appropriation as listed. Thank you.
Thank you. We are looking for a motion in a second to take action on this.
I'll move to approve this supplemental appropriation as listed.
Second.
All right. Motion from the Vice Mayor, and second from Mr. Pollard. Council discussion. All right.
City staff has done a great job with figuring out exactly how to let us pay for these pay increases, which keep our employees competitive with the state positions, and letting us do so without it coming out of our pockets directly. It's being paid for entirely from interest revenue on our savings, which we had no savings a few years ago, and previous council and city staff have made that possible. So that's, thanks for helping us get here as well as making it happen now.
I'll just add too, I want to thank city staff for pulling this off. We sit up here, we're council, we're the face of the city, however, we're not the ones that do the work, in all honesty. It's the city staff. So making sure that they're paid appropriately, making sure that they have competitive rates compared to other industries, other neighboring localities is important. We couldn't function as a city without our staff, so it's very important that we do things like this, and I'm very thankful that we're in a place that we can. So thank you to our staff for all the work they do.
I agree. You know, it keeps us competitive, and, you know, I have one question I think we discussed last time when we voted on doing these raises. You know, we're paying for it with interest earnings this time around, so. And I think that we've kind of seen a pattern from the state of consistent pay raises that will affect certain jobs and make us have to, you know, have a pay raise every year, probably. What kind of path forward do you or CFO see for paying for that year over year?
I think ongoing increases will need to be paid from ongoing revenues, the local revenues, probably sales, meals, lodging taxes, real property taxes, ongoing.
Okay.
And I guess next we'll have a presentation on some of that.
Yes.
All right. Hearing no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham.
Yes.
Holmes.
Yes.
Nave.
Yes.
Pollard.
Yes.
Osborne.
Yes. All right. Item four is presentation of FY '24 quarterly financial update, and this staff report comes from Mr. Phillips.
Mayor and members of council, this is the finance update for the first quarter of fiscal year '24, data through the quarter ending September 30th, 2023. This data is prepared on a cash basis and is unaudited. We're going to begin with our fund summary. Our general fund summary with a budget of $66.27 million, revenues of $12.1 million, 18% of budget, expenditures of $17.57 million, 27% of budget, for a fund deficit of $5.46 million that's September 30th. It's typical for the city to operate at a deficit for the first quarter of the fiscal year primarily due to the real estate and personal property tax deadline of December 5th. So this and the general fund expenditures related to items at the landfill primarily account for fiscal year 2024's first quarter deficit in the general fund. Our solid waste disposal summary with a budget of $37.3 million, revenues of $1.8 million, 5% of budget. The September revenue number does not account for the increase in the trash collection rate the first billing at the new rate was received in October. Expenditures of $7.7 million, 21% of budget, equalling a fund deficit of $5.9 million at September 30th. This fund deficit is largely driven by the year-to-date cost of landfill projects. Of the $7.7 million of solid waste expenditures, approximately $5.5 million is related to the construction of professional services and monitoring of the landfill items. Our local capital projects fund with a budget of $1.1 million, revenues of $0, 0% of budget, expenditures of $147,098, 13% of budget, for a fund deficit of $147,098 at September 30th. And this is due to a timing issue and recognizing the revenue from the general fund transfer, and this will correct in the second quarter of fiscal year 2024. We're looking at our state and federal capital projects fund with a budget of $16.197 million, revenues of $528,056, 3% of budget, expenditures of $14,394, less than 1% of budget, and this is so low because the projects didn't spend in the first quarter, for a fund surplus of $513,662 due to VDOT receivables at year-end that were received in August. Looking at our transit fund with a budget of $1.068 million, revenues of $276,446, 26% of budget, expenditures of $124,650, 12% of budget, for a fund surplus of $151,796. Our COVID-19 federal funds fund with a budget of $4.268 million, revenues of $3.25 million, consisting of $3.2 million from beginning fund balance, $40,000 in interest earnings, and $7,500 in federal revenue returned from Discover Bristol. Expenditures of $3.29 million, all of which has gone towards solid waste landfill projects, resulting in a small fund deficit of around $41,000 at September 30th. And additional revenues will be pulled from beginning fund balance, and this deficit will correct in the second quarter, and we do anticipate that the remaining balance of these funds will be expended by the end of this calendar year. Here's the general fund revenue summary. Of the $12.1 million received by the general fund, $6.77 million is from local sources, $4.397 million is from state sources, and $938,762 is from federal sources. Looking at our financial datographs, beginning with our local sales and use taxes, fiscal year '20 is shown in gray, fiscal year '21 is yellow, fiscal year '22 is red, fiscal year '23 is green, and fiscal year '24 is shown in blue. In our local sales and use tax, you can see continuing the trend of increasing from previous years and up just slightly from fiscal year '23 through September. And then our cigarette taxes on the right, also up slightly from all periods shown. Moving on to our lodging taxes, up from all years presented, our meals taxes also up from all years presented, and these graphs show positive performance in these revenues across the prior years, lodging taxes being up 42%, meals taxes up 29% through September 30th. This is what the sales tax revenue looks like as it is received by the city. The fiscal year '24 budget for this tax is $5.65 million. The blue line represents the prior three-year average, and the orange line represents fiscal year 2024. Our sales tax collections run two months behind, meaning that the receipts displayed on the graph for September were actually for the month of July. This is the city's meals tax with a budget of $9.7 million as it is received by the city. Meals tax is our largest budgeted other local tax. Meals tax runs one month behind, so September collections on the graph are actually for the month of August. Here's the city's lodging tax with an annual budget of $2.9 million. Our collections for lodging tax also run one month behind, so again, September collections are for the month of August. Moving on to our general fund expenditure summary, if all expenditures were even throughout the year, the benchmark at the end of the first quarter would be 25%. Government administration is at 32%, and that is higher due to outside legal fees incurred thus far. Judicial administration is at 24%, public safety is at 31%, and this is up due to the timing of expenditures for the regional jail authority, our LODA, which is paid entirely in the first quarter for the fiscal year, as well as due to public safety grants that did not have funds included in the original fiscal year '24 budget, and council has since corrected and appropriated those funds. Public works is at 25%, health, welfare, and social services is at 23%, education is at 26%, parks, recreation, and cultural is at 22%, community development is at 13%, non-departmental is at 66%, and that is up because our insurance payments are paid entirely in the first quarter of the fiscal year, as well as the city's final revenue sharing payment that was made in July of 2023. Debt is at 8%, and transfers are at 37% due to the transfer to solid waste. And you can see our total expenditures down there at 27% through September 30th. Transitioning now to solid waste, our cash balance in the solid waste disposal fund operating account was $0 at September 30th. This balance was exhausted in paying for the landfill projects, and the general fund began to pay these items for solid waste as we awaited temporary financing to reimburse those expenditures. Disposal revenue is at 19%. Keep in mind that we stopped accepting waste, so disposal revenue now accounts for less than 1% of the budgeted revenue for fiscal year '24. Collection revenue is at 11%, partially due to a timing issue in the receipt of those revenues. Through September 30th, we had received two months of trash collections, and the third month was received at the very beginning of October. And again, the first billing for the increased collection rate was received at the end of October and is not reflected in the September 30th numbers. Non-operating revenue is at 30%. Included in this is $2.1 million to be transferred from the general fund through September 30th. $1.3 million had actually been transferred. Disposal expenditures are at 20% due to the timing of expenditures related to the projects. Our collection expenditures are at 23%, and our debt expenditures are at 43% due to the timing of certain debt payments. I'd just like to note, debt has historically been 30% of our solid waste disposal fund budget. This year, it's currently 5% due to our project expenditures that have increased the fund's budget. Moving on to our falls, phases two and three update, budgeted revenues total $937,629. Our year-to-date revenues total $198,017, 21% of budget. A slight negative budget variance due to the property tax collections that will be received in the second quarter of the fiscal year. Debt allocated to the falls is $4.087 million, and these payments will be made later in the fiscal year. The city's final payment for revenue sharing of $46,415 was paid in July 2023, and the city's obligations for these payments has now been satisfied. The budgeted deficit for fiscal year '24 is $3.196 million, and the actual result through September 30th was a small surplus of $151,602 simply because no debt payments were made during the first quarter. Here's the information on the city's upcoming debt schedule, and this information is presented quarterly so that decision-makers and the public seize this information regularly. This is citywide general obligation bonded debt backed by the full faith and credit of the city of Bristol. You can see that citywide bond payments will increase to over $7.5 million through fiscal year '28 and the shortfall related to that increase. The $1 million previously annually budgeted for reserves will have to be used to pay the debt. And now that the revenue sharing payment has expired, those monies will also be used toward the debt escalation. The unexpended debt service reserve funds that council has committed for debt payments will be used through fiscal year '28 to offset the debt escalation, leaving a small amount to be funded of $359,187 in fiscal year 2028. So from fiscal year '29 forward, the city will need approximately $800,000 to supplement the debt payment schedule. For fiscal year '24, the city's debt payments total $7.4 million with a shortfall of around $2 million. The shortfall will be paid using $1 million previously budgeted for reserves, $350,000 previously used for revenue sharing, as well as $670,998 of committed reserve funds. So under the current debt service budget plan, the plan funds the debt service into fiscal year 2028, and this is the city's current plan. Here's the city's operating cash balance for the general fund, our solid waste disposal fund, our capital funds, and the transit fund. The balance at September 30th, 2023 was $16,283,375, a significant decrease from the previous year. As previously mentioned, a large part of this decrease is attributable to items related to the landfill projects. The balance at 9/30/2022 was $26.2 million, 9/30/21 was $20.2 million, 9/30/20 was $16.6 million, 9/30/19 was $13.5 million, 9/30/18 was $11.1 million, 9/30/17 was $3.5 million. And at September 30th, the city also had $1.5 million in reserves and $3.197 million in debt reserves. And also listed here is the city's TAN history, and the last time that was used was in the fall of fiscal year '17 for $1.7 million. And this concludes the finance update for September 30th, 2023, and the first quarter of fiscal year '24. Ms. Bradlin, Mr. Eas, do you all have anything that you all would like to add?
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Thank you.
I would just add that, you know, look at the solid waste disposal fund cash balance at zero, and now the general fund is picking up expenses associated with our landfill. We're by no means out of rough waters at this point. I think we have a few more months, if not maybe a year to go, before we are able to get all the expenses under control. And as I've mentioned before, and I think as everybody in here knows, we are seeking state assistance, which will be instrumental as we continue to move forward with projects.
All right, thank you. I'll go ahead and open it up to any questions or comments we might have. And thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
I noticed that the cigarette tax has gone up, which is unusual. Do you know if the units represented are still going down, and the increase was because our rate went up, or if this has gone, if the units sold has gone up reversing a trend?
I think we're still working through that data. I believe that went into effect July 27th, so I believe through those September 30th numbers, you may only be looking at a month to maybe a month and a half, two months actually at the increased rate. So I think that is something we need to monitor going forward as far as the number of units sold compared to the increased rate, what we're looking at.
So right now, it looks like people may actually be smoking more than they were last year.
I don't know that I would say that. I'd say part of it probably is due to the increased rate, because you're looking at three months of data there. It's a very slight increase, so I think it's certainly mostly attributed to the increased rate.
Okay. And if they are smoking more, we hope they're buying them in the city of Bristol, Virginia. So I have a couple things. So one thing that I think we should highlight, you know, when we raise the tax rates on meals tax, on lodging tax, you know, we assumed we would see a jump on these bar graphs, but I think you said there was a 42% jump on lodging tax.
That's correct.
Which is, you know, compared to, you know, the meals tax bar graph, that doesn't look like a lot of money. That's a lot of money for a jump on lodging tax. I think that's significant. I think that's, you know, attributable to, you know, some of the economic development efforts that have happened in the city and people wanting to come here and spend their money. So I think that's fantastic. I would also note, really glad to see that the revenue sharing agreement is done. I think that's big, you know, I don't, I did not enjoy sending those checks out, but that's done, and now we can reap whatever benefits from that business that we'll be getting going forward. So I think this is, you know, some of those numbers are a little bit scary, you know, we have less operating cash balance than we had before, but it's directly tied to ongoing projects. And I think overall, it's a pretty solid, pretty solid report. I think we're still in a good, very good position, and I believe that our next quarter And I believe that our next quarterly report, some of these numbers will even out, as you said, because it's a timing issue, so I think we're looking good.
I like that last blue bar over there. The restaurant Meals tax go in way up. I noticed that the Meals tax for the Falls was about double a budget. Apparently, the restaurants over there are doing quite well right now.
Not only are people smoking in Bristol, they're going out to eat in Bristol.
And we appreciate eating out more.
Yes, that's probably slightly more healthy for you.
And Mayor, I'll just note on these graphs, only two out of the three months represented for fiscal year 24 are at the increased rate where they run a month behind.
I think we'll, like, especially like lodging tax, restaurant tax, we'll see big jumps, because none of these, correct me because you said they run behind, these don't even include, like, rhythm, roots, and race. So, we'll see a pretty good, pretty good number in our next quarterly update, I'm sure.
The September numbers will be reflected in the October collections, yes.
But these largely represent business increases and not tax increases.
That's excellent.
Yes, that's wonderful. Thank you.
All righty, hearing no further discussion, thank you, Mr. Phillips, we appreciate it. Next item is Item Five, Euclid Avenue Tree Health and Root Damage to City Infrastructure, and the staff report is Mr. Chandler.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Over the last several weeks, Public Works has been assessing the Euclid Avenue corridor, see what improvements we need to make. And what we'd found is about 58 trees have damaged the city's infrastructure. The tree roots have heaved up the sidewalk, and the tree roots have pushed out the curb and gutter, allowing water to infiltrate down into the pavement section. So ADA standards define a tripping hazard of anything that's more than a quarter of inch of height. And you'll see in some of the following pictures, we've got sidewalk that's been heaved up six, seven inches, that's really causing a tripping hazard and making the corridor not accessible for the general public, especially if they're disabled. On top of that, we've got at least 12 trees that are either unhealthy or are dead, and we need to take those down just from a public safety point of view. The way the trees have grown along the curb line, we also can't get the street sweeper close enough to the curb line to pick up the trash and debris that's sitting along the curb line. And then I'll talk about the dogwoods later, but we've got about a dozen of those that are at the end of their life. They're old or diseased and dying. But, so if you look, if you walk down any section of Euclid Avenue, you're going to see quite a few trees have heaved up the sidewalk. And those trees are also confined by the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. So it makes it really difficult to get any kind of tree to grow there. And our proposal, and we'll go through all these photos, is once we take out all the trees along that corridor, to make the sidewalk ADA accessible, it needs to be six foot wide. And we're proposing that the sidewalk extend from the back of the curb out past where the back of sidewalk is now, and that will make it accessible for all of the general public. But just going through here, and you can stop me anytime, and we take a look at the slides, but we're ending up with curb and gutter section and pavement sections that's starting to pop off. And that's caused because the water's getting down in between the joints of the curb and gutter, and it'll freeze and thaw during the year, causing the potholes and the gutter line to pop off. So these are just the trees we've identified quickly, and we've been working with a landscaping company to help us identify which trees are really the ones that are causing the problem. But if you're trying to make the entire corridor accessible, you're going to have to take out all the trees between the sidewalk and the curb and gutter. And here's a good shot of where the sidewalks heaved up. There's about 72 pictures here, if y'all want to go through all of them, we can, or we can skip on to the end, it's up to you all. But along the median strip, we've got the dogwoods, and max height on the dogwoods are going to be 25 feet, so they don't really provide a canopy over the street section. And if we take out the trees along Euclid Avenue and rebuild the sidewalk, our thought, and one option was to plant Yoshino cherry trees, and they grow anywhere from 30 to 50 feet tall. And so that canopy would shade the street section on both sides of the median. They're also very heat tolerant, they attract pollinators, and they have a fragrant almond-scented smell when the cherry blossoms are blooming. And they'll form like a vase-like canopy. And they're actually part of the National Cherry Blossom Festival in Washington DC, and these are some examples of what their trees look like. So we just, just like your opinion on what you think we should do with this corridor. We're trying to make it accessible and take care of some drainage issues and deal with some subgrade issues that we're having in the street section.
Thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up for comments, questions.
Well, I'll jump in. I think, obviously, Euclid is a special spot in Bristol, and I think first and foremost, we need to, you know, make sure we're protecting the beautification of that stretch. And we're essentially talking about, like, Euclid down towards Commonwealth, that stretch, St. Anne's to Commonwealth. The way it helped me understand, I was trying to break it into two different parts. I was focusing on the trees that are on the sides by the sidewalk, and then the middle sections kind of separately. As far as along the street and the sidewalk, I definitely understand the need where those trees have been affecting the sidewalks and, you know, as far as a tripping hazard or ADA accessibility, that's very important that we, you know, maintain those sidewalks properly. I feel like it was several years ago, there was a study done where the trees were cut down on State Street, and new trees were planted. And I feel like I remember reading, it was because the roots were shallow, and it was going to start affecting the sidewalk and street downtown, and different trees were planted to, that had roots that essentially grow deeper to hopefully not mess up the street and sidewalk downtown. So, is that, is that a potential plan? And I know you mentioned the need to do the sidewalks. Would it essentially be an option where there wouldn't be any strip of grass between the curb and the sidewalk, it'd just be all sidewalk?
That would be my proposal. As a homeowner, and I've had to deal with this too at my own house, when you've got that small strip of grass between the sidewalk and curb and gutter, it's difficult to get anything to grow. And usually, you don't have a very wide area, and you've got to maintain that. And it's always going to be something like a mower and a half wide, and so you're going to have to make at least two trips, and a lot of the times, the grass won't even survive in that area. Just because when you're building sidewalk and curb and gutter, the ground is compacted really hard, and so it doesn't allow the roots to really move around and grow deep. And to get ADA compliant sidewalk in there, I need six-foot wide sidewalk, which doesn't leave much room back behind the back of sidewalk, especially with some of the properties that either have a wall or a steep slope there along the sidewalk area.
So legally, just for my information, legally, that little stretch between the street and the sidewalk, it's sort of like, essentially, does the, is that city property, technically?
So, city property goes back to the right-of-way line, or where the property line, whichever one you want to call it, it's the same thing. Generally, the right-of-way line's going to go to the back of the sidewalk, generally. Now, there's some exceptions to that.
The city maintains the sidewalk, but a lot of homeowners essentially come out and mow that little strip of grass.
And I think they're, Jake can correct me, but I think they're obligated by ordinance to mow that small strip of grass that's there. So I'm just, I don't feel like we have a lot of room there to do what's been done on State Street. And what they did with State Street, excavated down and turned pipe vertical and slid the pipe down in the hole to keep the tree roots from expanding out and busting the sidewalk. But you've still got to have that six-foot width to be ADA compliant. And I'm just not sure if there's enough right-of-way there to do that and still have the six-foot width for ADA traffic.
Well, it seems based on what you've been saying and showing, that even if we could maintain the area of grass, which it seems like a lot of homeowners would rather we not do, that there still wouldn't be anywhere near enough space to replant the trees there.
I don't think there would be, not without acquiring right-of-way, but then what do you do with those sections that people have retaining walls or a very steep slope up to their front yard? I mean, that'd be difficult to deal with, and expensive.
It seems like, as Mr. Farnham was saying, we need to, in our discussions, we need to largely differentiate between the medians versus the outer curbs and the homeowner-adjacent.
Yep. And what I was trying to, and it was just a proposal to put something bigger in the median, that would be attractive, and that would still provide you a good canopy along that corridor.
So, do you know, what kind of trees are planted between the sidewalk and the curb?
They vary anywhere from, there's tulip poplars, there's some oaks, maples, elm trees, it's a hodgepodge of trees out that.
Are they all roughly the same age? Like, were they all planted?
I wouldn't know.
In a coordinated way?
I wouldn't know.
I will say, I just jotted down a couple of house numbers from those pictures you were showing, and I told Mr. Paolo this morning, you know, at least us three last year spent a whole lot of time walking up and down Euclid Avenue, and it is just up and down, up and down the whole way. And, you know, I tripped a couple times, I cannot imagine how many kids at Halloween are going up and down that street, you know, tripping, falling flat on their face with some of those big, like that.
Well, yeah, well, just think about it, if you're in a wheelchair, you're not getting over that.
Yeah. And that's, I mean, that's, even if you're not in a wheelchair, if you're just, if you have some other type of disability that, you know, makes it difficult to walk, you're having a very hard time. You know, so I think that, what would the timeline be if we did this?
With our staff, we definitely couldn't do the whole corridor quickly.
Yeah.
I mean, so we'd probably be looking at doing a block at a time.
Yeah.
Time-wise, we hadn't really mapped out a timeframe, but I would say to take out all the trees and rebuild the sidewalk, you're probably looking a year, at least a year.
Okay. Now, on to the median stuff. So, the reason you may have suggested the cherry trees that you did, with the loss of all these larger trees up against the edge of the road, obviously, suddenly, there's no shade, and so you're thinking about bigger trees. So, you would only replace about, you say about 12?
Well, there's 12 that are dying.
Yeah.
But, you know, if we wanted to provide a nice, uniform look, we would just take them out as we work, walk the block, and replant them as we go.
How quickly do those cherry trees grow?
That's a good question. I'd have to look at it, I forgot to look at it.
Because it could be that, you know, if you do it all at once, then we could have a few years where it's just no shade whatsoever.
Yes.
It looks funny.
It would be that way regardless of what tree you used. I mean, usually, when you buy a sapling, they're about a one-and-a-half-inch caliper.
Yeah.
And that's, the reason you buy the saplings are the ones that have the most likelihood of living. If you buy bigger trees and transplant them, there's a good chance they're not going to live.
Like root shock, is that what that's called?
Yeah, root shock.
Well, we've certainly heard some feedback from some folks in the city, around the area, that I think are used to the dogwoods and like the look of the dogwoods, so I definitely understand the reasoning behind possibly looking at a different type of tree, but I'm also open to, you know, doing dogwoods again.
And we definitely could. Our consultant gave us two other dogwoods we could use, but I mean, again, you're only looking at a max height of 15 to 25 feet, so you're not going to get any canopy coverage at that moment.
Roughly, do you know what the cost per tree is between the two?
They're all roughly about $260 each.
$260, and that's for either type of tree?
And we'd be using state maintenance funds, this is state eligible, so we'd be using state maintenance money to pay for this.
So right now, that little strip, going back sort of to the side of the road where the sidewalk is, that little strip between the curb and the sidewalk is, what, maybe two feet, and the sidewalks, maybe another three, so we may not even have the six feet, even if all of that was.
We may not, but we got to rebuild some of the curb and gutter as well, so, you know, we could sheet it out into the road a little bit to get that six-foot. And we got to rebuild the curb and gutter along the median strip as well, because we've got subgrade issues all the way out that street section.
Well, and this is maybe some kind of a different conversation about the type of sidewalk. I know it's just normal to do just a flat concrete sidewalk, but, you know, some cities have brick, some cities have some other type of stone, I don't know if there's any other types of, just to, because it's such a unique part, we want it to look pretty, we want it to look nice, so maybe instead of just a concrete, flat surface, maybe it's some other type of, I know other type of stone and rock maybe.
The danger with that is those typically don't settle evenly, so you end up with tripping hazards. I mean, I can, I've walked down many streets that have brick sidewalk, looks great from a distance, but when you actually start walking on it, you'll start getting uneven surface, and you'll actually have it heave up a little bit.
There's a lot of.
It just don't settle.
Yeah, there's a lot of brick in downtown Abingdon, and there's a lot of that, where some trees have, but essentially, if there's no trees growing, and it's just sidewalk, I don't know.
But you're still going to have that uneven settlement, because even if we take all the trees down, there's no guarantee we can get all the roots out. And so over time, those roots will decay, and that's where you start getting your uneven settlement, and it really shows up when you're using brick or stone or something like that.
I'll just say, I appreciate you looking into this. I live a couple streets back from Euclid, my wife and I go walking at night. I've tripped, I've left some blood on the sidewalk, so this is a welcome plan. Just going to the median though, I, like Mr. Farnham said, we have heard from several folks about replacing the dogwoods with something else. I do appreciate the cover and the idea of having the cherries, but I would prefer personally, and then also from everybody I've heard, to, if we could find a way to do dogwoods again, it just, I think at one point, they were installed as like a memorial of some sort, and just keeping that image coming down Euclid with the dogwoods in the middle is just the state tree, state flower, is just a pretty sight, and I think, I think folks want to keep it that way if we can, so.
And we definitely can, it's just, there'll be no canopy out that corridor unless homeowners decide to plant some trees back on their property that will mature over time.
It's also a historic district, so there's the concerns there about retaining the historic character and the dogwoods. I'm sure many of the people who live in that area, as well as those in the historic societies, would agree that the dogwoods help form part of that historic character. Concerning that, I would like to see some of the trees that have been removed over time to be restored. Some of them may need to be replaced to be done properly, because from what I understand, some of the trees, and this would be before anyone currently on the city staff, some of the trees were installed a little more inexpensively than they should have been, which may be causing some of the root issues because they weren't installed as deeply as they should have been.
Are you talking about in the median section?
We're already looking at removing the ones that aren't in the median for the sake of the sidewalks, but some of that also may be the case in the median as well. I know that some of them aren't centered like they should be.
Well, there's also utilities running down that median strip that you have to avoid. You don't want to plant a tree right on top of the utility. There's water lines, underground electric, stuff like that running through that median, so that's why you see them staggered down the corridor.
It needs to be a consistent pattern. It needs to be a consistent pattern if it's staggered. Right now, some of them look randomly placed.
And, and they are, it's because of the underground utilities. I mean, we can look at staggering them in, in more of a uniform manner, but just realize there may not be as many trees there when we're done, because the water lines, not the cities, that's BVU's, and that's, that would be in a very expensive project for BVU to go out and move their water main, and they would most likely want the city to pay for that.
In some cases, perhaps, we could do like, some localities are done and put in a bench. If you can't have a tree there because of the utilities, keep your pattern and put a bench there.
But the median is posted for no walking or running, so do you want to encourage people to go out into the median by setting benches out through there?
That's a good point. Something decorative nevertheless. And along similar lines, we also want, probably want to reinstate the alternating colors, the alternating pink and white.
Okay.
I understand that a previous city staff, as sometime in the past, of course, not current staff, it's been sometime, as demonstrated by the age of the trees, decided to go with more white trees, because at that point, at that time, they cost less. But if we could reinstate the alternating, without going out and just replacing trees just because we can, but a lot of them already need to be replaced, so as we replace them, we can replace them with the right ones and properly located.
So, just for clarity, I know you said this would be a VDOT, this would be a state reimbursable expense. Would that be just for the removal of the trees in the sidewalk, or would that also include replacing trees in the median?
That would include replacing the trees in the median, because they're existing within the street corridor.
Would you be doing any work, like, on the median itself?
We do need to work on the median as well. Our plan is to raise the entire street section and the curb and gutter up a little bit, because there's not much subgrade, suitable sub, subgrade underneath the street. So, we need to build it up a little bit with some stone and deal with some drainage issues we've had as well.
So, you're talking about replacing all of that section of Euclid?
Most likely, yes.
Not just the curb and gutter, not just the median, but redoing the entire street?
Yeah.
So, this is going to be a lengthy, expensive process?
It will be, yeah.
So, this is just a discussion item for us now, but is, is there like a timeframe that you are looking for regarding some direction and agreement from all of us about what to do?
Well, we thought we'd have the discussion, just to get your all's feel for it and let you know what the issues are along the street section, and just get a feel for it. I mean, we've got other projects slated already, but we can, we can either delay this a little bit if there's more conversation that needs to occur, or, you know, we were thinking about next spring, maybe, starting at the earliest.
I think what we'll do, we'll, we appreciate, this is a whole lot of, this is a big presentation and a whole lot of information, so we appreciate it. So, I think we'll, we'll probably take a week or so, and we'll, we'll get back to you and tell you what we're thinking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, onto our next section, which is ordinances, first reading. So, number one is first ordinance reading for file number 02-2023, request for zoning map amendment on Brewer Road. No one has signed up for public comment on that. Staff report.
I'm going to get to the right place here on the slide. Thank you, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Staff has received a, an application for a zoning map amendment for tax parcel 465A3 to rezone the property from R2, single and two-family residential, to AC, which would be an agricultural with conditions. As you remember, this item was presented at a public hearing two weeks ago at this meeting. Location, Brewer Road, kind of there at the bottom, which will show you as it backs, a very large piece of property, about 14 acres, which backs up to the city landfill. The owner of the property, Keith and Jennifer Emery. The request being a conditional rezoning as opposed to a traditional zoning. City code does allow for conditional rezoning in section 50 hyphen 200. As I mentioned, the existing zoning definition, or the existing zoning designation is R2, and the future land use map designation is heavy industrial. The size of the site is the one parcel and 13.97 acres. I do want to just kind of go through the proposed conditions. After the first planning commission meeting with the applicant, the planning commission expressed some concerns about some of the uses that are listed as permitted right, by right uses in an agricultural district, given the sides of the street through there and the lack of infrastructure. And what the applicant really just wants to do is construct a single-family home, have a barn with a few horses and maybe a few goats for personal use. This, unfortunately for them, was not allowed in a residential district. So, after listening to the concerns of the planning commission, the applicant and staff got together, the applicant proffered the following conditions to be used for a conditional rezoning. I'll go through those real quick. Single or two-family residential, accessory uses and accessory dwellings as permitted in the city code, home occupations, utilities major, gardening, the keeping of no more than three horses for personal use, the keeping of no more than two goats for personal use, and the keeping of chickens in accordance with the city code requirements of agricultural uses on residential property. That's currently section 50 hyphen 136A. So, what that is, you can keep chickens on a residentially zoned lot if you have it under certain conditions.
Six chickens.
Right, six chickens, they have to be so far away from the property line, they have to be kept in very specific types of humane cages, you know, no running loose, anything like that. The city already also has ordinances when it comes to livestock that basically says livestock shall not run at large, so any horses or goats on a residential lot or an agricultural lot would still have to be kept, you know, in a fence, in a barn. So, this wouldn't really be much of a change. So, the property does front on a public street, Brewer Road, for approximately 500 feet. This section of Brewer Road is located in and controlled by Bristol, Tennessee. The existing uses bordering the subject track are residential to the south, west, and east, and the recently closed landfill is located to the north. I just want to go through just real quick some of the staff comments that I brought up at the public hearing. For the most part, all of the comments were either positive or neutral to the rezoning. There are acceptable hydrant flows in the area for fire protection. The one thing that we did not hear, and I didn't have an answer for at the, at the public hearing, was for the water and sewer. Bristol, Tennessee would be responsible for providing water service, and I did have a comment from Will Witcher of Bristol, Tennessee, who says that the city owns and operates a two-inch water line along Brewer Road. We can provide water service to this property from our existing line, provided that no more than one single-family dwelling is proposed, and that is the proposal of the applicant. There are, there is no sewer in the area, so the property owner would have to install and maintain a septic tank. So, for our conclusion on this, as I mentioned, the original version of this request was for the property to be rezoned from R2, single and two-family residential, to agricultural with no conditions. But when evaluating the appropriateness of a rezoning request, both the planning commission and the city council must evaluate the impact a change in zone would have on the surrounding area. Once a property is rezoned, then any of those permitted uses would be allowed on the property, either by the original applicant or by a potential future owner. Based on the comments by the planning commission at their October 16, 2023 meeting, and their concerns for potential business uses permitted in the agricultural district, the applicant chose to proffer uses and requests the conditional zoning map amendment. The uses that have been proffered keep the residential character of the property while allowing for a limited amount of agricultural production, the keeping of the specific number of horses and goats for personal use. It also limits the applicant to the same number of chickens, which would be permitted by right on any R2 property in the city. The applicant will still be subject to all local ordinances regarding care and storage of any livestock or chickens on the property. The remote location and the size of the property will lessen the impact to any adjoining property owners, and as mentioned earlier in the report, the future land use map shows the property to be heavy industrial, but after an analysis, an analysis of the property, staff finds that an industrial use would be inappropriate for an area such as this with limited infrastructure and street access. The planning commission at its November 20, 2023 meeting voted to recommend the zoning map amendment to the city council by a vote of six to zero. Staff believes that the request is appropriate for this property and recommends that the city council approve the request on first ordinance reading. And also, just will apologize in advance, I did make an error on the ordinance caption. For anybody who might have caught that, that's what happens when you copy and paste a little too much, but I'll make sure that's corrected if approved for the second reading, and if, when reading the caption, I'll omit that one section.
Right. Thank you very much. So, we are looking for a motion, a second, for first reading of the ordinance, which can be in full or by caption only.
Mr. Mayor, I make that motion for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Farnham, second from Mr. Holmes. Council discussion.
Well, I think we've looked at it, city staff has looked at it, and the planning commission has looked at it, and I don't have any questions, and I don't think there'll be any issues with this.
What would be included as a major utility? I noticed that's something that normally requires a special use permit.
Well, that was, that's something that was permitted in the agricultural district by right. Hold on one moment, and I'll read you the definition.
Is my understanding that required a, a permit? I may have misread on that, though.
Well, I'll find out, that's fine. Yes, it would. So, that would also require a special use permit, just as anything else in the agricultural district. Thank you for that correction.
So, this, this isn't basically giving them a special use permit?
No, no, they would still have to request that special use permit.
So, these proposed conditions, then, wouldn't be by right?
Just the one would not be correct, and I'll make sure that's better indicated. Basically, a public or privately owned and operated facility or infrastructure that serves a community-wide need and may have onsite personnel, such as electric generating plants and substations, water treatment plant, water tank, solar farms.
Any idea why that may have been included?
In this particular one, just to keep as many agricultural uses in there, but we can make sure it is still by the special use permit, which of course, then would have to come back for the council to, for the appropriateness.
I wouldn't necessarily have a problem with it, it's just I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
I was thinking, maybe they're wanting to allow for solar panels on the property or something.
And that could be something, you know, on a piece of property that big, it might be something that's beneficial.
What's the difference between gardening and farming?
Gardening is just for personal use, you're not selling, you're not taking it out and using it for a business. Gardening is pretty much allowed on any, any lot, residential lots, we just kept it in there.
All righty, well, thank you very much. So, hearing no further discussion, if the clerk would call the roll, please.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Reading the ordinance by caption only.
Ordinance number 23 hyphen 26, an ordinance by the city council of Bristol, Virginia, approving the request to amend the city zoning map from single and two-family residential, R2, to agricultural district with conditions, AC, for tax map parcel 465 hyphen A hyphen three.
All righty, thank you very much. All right, so, next item on the agenda is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. So, basically, the way this works, when I call your name, come up, come to the microphone, say your name, where you live, you have three minutes. When the green light comes on, that's when your time starts. When the yellow light comes on, that means you have 30 seconds. Red light comes on, that means you're out of time, and just, just wrap up whatever you're going to say. First, actually, the only person signed up is Ms. Kissner.
The cleaning and restoration of the Bristol Confederate soldier Ann Carter Lee, United Dollars of the Confederacy, 1997 to 2015. I want to thank the city council for the privilege to speak and to plan more, these, these are all facts about the Confederate soldier. I was chairman of that project, and you can tell by the dates I give you how long it took us to accomplish this project. Colonel James M. Barker was born on December 20, 1847, near Bristol, Tennessee. He was a gallant soldier, and at the age of 15 years old, he enlisted in the 12th Battalion under Major Day. He was the last survivor of Company H31 Tennessee Regiment, Taylor's Brigade, Stevenson's Division. Following the war, Colonel Barker re-entered school and moved to Bristol, Tennessee. He was especially interested in education. For 20 years, he served on the Tennessee State Board of Education, and at the request of the governor, he started the Normal School, which trained teachers. He also served on the Bristol, Tennessee Board of Education for 15 years, five of them as chairman. As a member of First Presbyterian Church, he served as a deacon and taught Sunday School 45 years. He made a great contribution to the Bristol community by donating a white Italian marble statue of a Confederate soldier to the United Dollars of the Confederacy. The inscription on the statue states, quote, "Presented by Colonel James M. Barker of Bristol, Tennessee, to the chapter of the UDC in memory of the brave men and noble women of Tennessee and Virginia from 1861 to 65 erected 1920." In 1991, the Ann Carter Lee, chapter of the United Dollars of the Confederacy, with the support of the community and other groups in counties surrounding Bristol City, all of these groups voted or gave, their vote was giving money to restore this project. We wanted to cover the veteran, undertook a project to repair the statue, cover it with a preservative, and move it to a safer location where it could be enjoyed by the public. Its location on State Street, next to the train station, put the statue in danger of damage from the pollution, generated not only by many vehicles that passed by daily, but also from 15 to 20 trains that came through daily, bringing with them black smoke and dust, especially from coal-carrying cars, as well as significant ground vibration. This location also afforded no safe place for tourists to stand and take pictures. We were advised the statue, now over 100 years old, would not last much longer in such an environment. Our chapter started a fundraising drive to move, repair, and clean the white Italian marble statue of this basically clad soldier. This was, it meant for all soldiers, really. It was not a Confederate outfit. Letters were sent to citizens of both Bristol's and the surrounding area. We also published a cookbook called Dixie Delight, filled with Confederate recipes contributed by the public, which sold for $25. Through these combined efforts, we raised $5,400 for the project circa 1997. Through these combined efforts, we raised $5,400 for the project circa 1997. Next, we hired John Moran from Roanoke to do a structure and surface analysis study. That was in 2007. Pictures were included in this report and showed damaged areas on the surface of the soldier, cracks, fissures, a sugaring of part of the marble due to the acidic water intrusion resulted in a rough, powdery appearance. A cracked that went all the way to the base, damage to the right eye and part of the mouth, and lichen which grew around the soldier's head, along with the environmental damage. The depth of penetration of some of these defects into the marble could not be determined. That's because this specialist didn't have an instrument that could see through the marble to see how deep these imperfections were. I have pictures here of, I have the report and pictures, if you'd like to see them, and these were taken before it was cleaned. The soldier is six foot three inches tall. He was not actually attached to the limestone base, but now, following the repair and cleaning, he is attached to the base. In 2013, Hilton Crane and Wrecking Company of Abington, Virginia, moved the soldier and base. They began the process at 9:00 AM in the morning and by aligning the flatbed truck with chains and props to keep the soldier in place. One small mishap could have caused great harm and damage, both the soldier and the large blocks of limestone at the bottom, and if you look at it closely, it's, it's already damaged quite a bit, that part of it. Blocks of ice were placed between them to more easily move the tons of limestone into place. Once all was in place, the truck moved the statue three blocks over from State Street to Lee Street, as approved by then-city manager Dewey Cashwell, where the soldier stands today. This process took five to six hours. The fragility of the soldier rendered it unsafe to attempt to move again. A marble specialist that we hired from up around Roanoke came to Bristol to check the statue and price the cleaning project. He worked about three days, finishing the job with a special solution and sealant. He said many companies use sandblasting or pressure washing with water or steam, but these are very bad for white marble, in his words. It would be like brushing your teeth with Comet. The soldier was appraised by an Ohio insurance company at $125,000 in 2010, and a two-year policy was purchased. Today, the appraisal of the statue would be much more than $125,000. Just a break in the soldier could be $100,000 to $250,000 to repair. The narrow road in East Hill Cemetery, which was suggested during this discussion, over, over which the flatbed truck would have to take this fragile soldier and base, unload it, line it up correctly, is completely inadequate to accommodate such a move in East Hill Cemetery. If it costs the UDC $5,400 to clean it, think how difficult and expensive it would be to taxpayers today, that's over 10 years ago. Bristol, Virginia would have to foot this bill to move the statue now. In Floyd County, they had a soldier very similar to this. It was close to the street, a small car ran into it, and the soldier was not attached to the base, so it just fell, fell off, which is a tragedy, and he said it went to innumerable pieces. That's the word he used. The detailed work of cleaning, moving, and preserving the soldier was done in 2014. The Washington Times newspaper reported it came to Bristol.
If you could kind of wrap up your, your, your comments, please, we'd appreciate it. Go ahead.
We, well, I'll skip part of that. It's important that you know all the facts about this soldier before a decision is made. We had a dedication service at Reynolds United Methodist Church, which was attended by city council and members of the community. Acreed Funeral Home donated a Confederate marble marker, which is now, you can see it, the soldier. The Ann Carter Lee's purpose of this project was to preserve our history and American heritage and to teach our students and adults all history of our past, as recommended by Governor Youngkin, January 23, who said, stated, "We teach all of our history, the good and the bad." The current, current location of the statue on Lee Street is near the school board office. It's a good and appropriate place for him, as he was dedicated to education for many years. It is a reminder of our collective history in a public place visible to all in our region, and we'd like to thank the Bristol Harold Cooyer, who kept up with this project, and anytime there were moves being made of different kinds, he, they came and covered the article. There was nothing secret about any of this work we did with the soldier, and I appreciate the time. If anyone would like to see other information I have, I'll be glad to show it to them. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Ms. Kissner. If you don't mind, if you could provide the clerk with a copy of that, so we could, we could all see that, we'd appreciate it.
All of you should have gotten a copy of all of this that I read. Well, it's, it's more basic information, it's what you got, but if you'd like a copy of this speech, I can get-
If you don't mind, just so we can, we can see it and digest it all, we'd appreciate-
Do you want that now?
Yeah, if you'll, after, after the meeting, if you'll just talk with her, she'll help you out.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next item is our closed session. So executive session pursuant to section 2.2-3711A1, Code of Virginia 1950 is amended. Discussion consideration or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, parenthetical personnel. Looking for a motion and a second to enter into closed session.
So move.
Second.
All right. Motion from Mr. Pollard, second from the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. We'll be back. A roll call vote. Councilmember certified that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements and specified in the motion to convene the executive session were discussed. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. I will entertain any motions anybody has.
I would like to move to accept the city manager's recommendation to hire landfill director.
Second.
All right. Motion by Mr. Pollard to accept the city manager's recommendation to hire a landfill director, and second by the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. All right, next item is the consent agenda. Looking for a motion and a second to take action.
I move the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
All right, motion from Mr. Holmes, second from the vice mayor. Please call the roll.
Farnham?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Nave?
Yes.
Pollard?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes. There being no further business, we stand adjourned.